Okay, good evening everyone. And welcome to our November 18th meeting of the Los Banas City Council. And at this time, I'd like to call Father Noah Lawson up to the podium from St. Albans Anglican Church for the opening prayer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and distinguished council members, city staff, and citizens of Los Banas. The Lord be with you. Let us pray. Almighty God, Heavenly Father, we praise you and we thank you for the gift of the day that is now past and for the evening that is upon us. We bow before in your presence and invite you, Holy Spirit, to be present in this place, that all that is said and done here might be guided by your wisdom, for the glory and honor of your name, for the benefit of the citizens of Los Banas, and for the good of all people. These things we pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting of November 18th, 2015. And Chief, would you lead us in the flags?
I would lead us to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, before we start, I want to welcome Mr. Dela Cruz's high school college prep government class. And we really appreciate you being here tonight, and anytime that we can answer any questions, any member of the council, please feel free to ask us. And I'm going to make just, I want to change something up for just a minute, because I don't know if you're going to be here for the whole meeting, so I'm going to have to tell you now, that on December 8th, excuse me, December 2nd, the Los Banas City Council will be hosting its annual, 19th annual Holiday Open House at the City Hall here, before the council meeting. So it will be from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. So students, if you would like to come, we would be more than happy. Please talk to people, we'd love to have you come, that way you can talk individually to the mayor and to the council members, if you wish, and we'll have a lot of the city staff here. So I'm personally inviting you, as would the rest of the council members, please come on December 2nd between 6:00 and 7:00 p.m. And public, too, please. Come. All right, let's go on to roll call. Director Maloney?
Maria?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Silvera?
Stonegrove?
Here.
Lualta? Here. We have a call. Let's go on to item four, consideration of approval of agenda. Do I have a motion? Mr. Freya?
I'll move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Mrs. Lewis?
I'll second.
Motion by Freya, second by Lewis, to approve the agenda as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to item five, public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. When you approach the podium, please state your name and city of residence, and if you have a cellphone, please place them on vibrator, turn it off. Is there anyone who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Good evening. My name is Cassandra Helmark. I was the chairperson for the 2016 Veterans Parade, and I just wanted to come down and thank the city for all that they've done. I spoke with Royall over at the Public Works office, and he and his crew were very helpful in getting out the barriers and turning the power on for the parade. Also, to Chief Brazey and the police on staff that day, I'd like to say thank you. So it was a wonderful parade, and we hope that it continues. So, thank you.
Well, thank you to you and all the vets, and make sure it continues, okay? All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Eric Lemoy, Republic Services, resident of Los Banas. Good evening, all. Just a quick reminder for our residents, we'll be a day behind next week for Thanksgiving, Thursday, the 26th. If your route day is on Thursday, then the 26th, your service day will be on Friday, and Friday is route on Saturday. Another reminder for any citizen that is 65 years of age or older, or is disabled with a doctor's note, can't have backyard service. With this service, your driver will kindly take out your carts and bring them back in. The service is completely free, and please contact Republic Services at 826-0231. Thank you.
Thank you. So anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Jeff Dela Cruz, resident of Los Banas. I'd just like to take time to thank the council for welcoming my class to the meeting tonight. I think it's very important for young kids to know how their local government works, their state government works, and their federal government works, and so this gives them a little taste of that tonight, so I thank you all for allowing us to be here tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Bertha Furia, Los Banas Chamber of Commerce. Really short and quick, only thing I have is to remind everybody that our annual Christmas parade will be held on Friday, December the 4th, through downtown Los Banas, and you have until the 24th of November to get your applications into our office. You can call us, we'll email you one, we'll fax you one, or you can go to our website at losbanas.com and download an application and get it in with any of your organizations, your family. And our theme this year is "A Sesame Street Christmas," and is sponsored by our very own Republic Services. Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Freya, did you have a comment?
There's no cost to enter, is that correct? It's a one parade, there's no cost to enter.
All right. Does anyone else like to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum, and we will go on to item six, which is consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from a consent agenda by a City Council member. Tonight, we have?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 156319, 3156619, in the amount of $1,574,171.97. Minutes for the September 16th, 2015 City Council meeting. Minutes for the October 21st, 2015 City Council meeting. City Council Resolution Number 5709, accepting the 13th Street water extension as complete, and authorizing the filing of a notice of completion with the Merced County Recorder's Office. City Council Resolution Number 5710, accepting the Henry Miller Area Storm and L Street Water Line as complete, and authorizing the filing of a notice of completion with the Merced County Recorder's Office. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay. Is there any City Council member that would like to remove an item for discussion? Not hearing any? Do I have a motion? Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as read.
Okay. Do I have a second? Mr. Freya?
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Lewis, second by Freya, to accept the consent agenda as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to item seven, consideration of approval of City Council Resolution Number 5711, accepting final track map number 2004-05, for the Villages 3, Phase 1 at Stone Creek, and Villages 3, Phase 2 at Stone Creek, and accompanying subdivision improvement agreement. And we'll go to Director, Engineer Faison and Director Faison.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. Tonight before you-
...............
And this would approve final map number--
2004-05, Villages 3, Phase 1 and Phase 2.
Hmm? What's going on?
Subdivision agreement, excuse me.
We're just losing your mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. One thing to note, and I'll apologize for this, when you do, if you're so inclined to approve the resolution, the date on the resolution in the last paragraph is November 4th, it should be November 18th. This staff report was finished for November 4th meeting, but we didn't have all the information from the subdivider, that's why we did that. Okay. Little background, these are the final two final maps, the final from best intended map, track map, 2004-05, which was approved in April 13th, 2005. These maps represent 172 single-family lots on 39 acres. And it borders Church Road on the west. It's south of Stone Creek Boulevard and north of Cardozo. It's a little triangle piece over by the roundabout. And if you do go out there, all the improvements are done, completed, and they've been accepted through a county resolution already. So, the following findings have been met on these maps. They are in substantial compliance with tentative track map 2004-05. The financial security has been deposited with the city. In this case, the only financial security needed was the one-year maintenance bond because the improvements have been completed. All required processing, development, land check, and inspection fees have been paid. And all bonds have been paid to Merced County, and that's the recording bonds. Important thing about this area as far as fiscal impact, there are no new park areas in these two subdivisions at all. And they will be annexed into landscaping lining district number 17 at the current costs. And as I said, all the improvements have been completed and the subdivision improvements will be on the next council agenda, on the consent agenda to accept them as subdivision improvements because they've already had a notice of completion filed with the county. So if there's any questions, be glad to answer them.
Okay. Do we have any questions, Mr. Faison? Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Furia?
I'll move to approve city council resolution number 5711 as read by title.
Do I have a second? Stone Grove?
Second.
Motion by Furia, second by Stone Grove to approve city council resolution number 5711 as read by title. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Storm preparedness presentation. Public Works Director, City Engineer Faison. Did you take these pictures? They're nice.
No, I didn't.
Okay.
Credit the PowerPoint to Tim Baptiste of my staff, he's wonderful at it. This is just a little forewarning of the pending El Nino. As everyone says, it's heading our way. When I listened to the news last night, the Pacific Ocean's still quite a bit warmer than it usually is, so they still think it's going to come and hit us. So, just some things that we do every year, but this year, we're doing a little bit more preparedness. And some, that's the first item will be what Public Works is doing and other departments. Second item is what the local residents could do to help the situation too. Knowing that with this type of a storm that they're predicting, even our normal storms does, we do flood the streets out for a little while. So, we do, we will, we will have storm flooding a little bit in the streets as we always do with any type of storm event in the city. Due to none of the storm drain infrastructure in any city is capable of handling any storm at any one moment, it's the runoff that it's designed to handle. So, the first one will be measures by the Public Works Department, things that we have been doing. We have weekly inspections and maintenance of 20 storm pump stations, 49 pumps, and 16 storm basins serving the city. As I said, this is every year, but we are doing even a little bit better job of it this year than we usually do. Item number two, we are inspecting and cleaning of storm inlets and storm piping. The first storm that hit a couple of weeks ago was a really, it was a decent storm, it was an inch and a half of rain. It really helped us. It kind of recognized areas that we hadn't cleaned out in a while, even though we do. And so we got right on those and cleaned that. So it was a good primer for what we hope would be a decent winter. Item number three is inspection and cleaning of storm transfer ditches. This is including the one at the airport. These are ditches such as the ditches located next to, on the trail, on the canal trail just west of Center Avenue. Ditches like that, we do clean out. We have several ditches that we drain into that we maintain, so. Repair replacement of curb and gutter to improve drainage in known areas of concern. These are areas that we're improving the curb and gutter around the city, and they are on a list, quite extensive list of curb and gutter areas that we approve every year. And we do about $150,000 of those improvements every year, depending on how much overlay we do or how much street improvements we do. The installation of the storm drain improvements, this is the project that you just approved for completion. There's over one and a half million dollars that we spent on that job altogether with design. And already in the first storm, you can see an improvement around the hospital, around Seven, around, I guess it's a Circle K there, correct?
Yeah.
And around Apex. It's not the ultimate improvement, there's another improvement that will come down the line that will help it even more, but this is a very good step in the right direction. It really worked quite up to what we expected it to. The equipment for the crews and the trucks have been double-checked. This includes rain gear, flashlights, portable lights, great hooks, hand tools, barricades, signage, chainsaws, anything that we had that we would use during a storm event. City staff, even as of today, we did, has been attending courses on emergency preparedness. Through the fire department, we developed a new emergency operations plan, and we are scheduled to do some tabletop exercises when actually we like to say which person's in charge of which part of that emergency operation plan. The last item is sort of a large one. This is basically just telling, letting you know that we do have portable generators. We have several sites that have a regular generator in them. We do check our generators all the time. We have standing agreements with local vendors for emergency rental of the generators, so they are checked every winter before, before every winter and also during the summer also. We do own self, the city does own and maintain seven portable pumps and one large trailer pump. We have standing agreements with local vendors. When we need extra pumps, when there's a flood event, we do have emergency rental pumps on standby agreements. Our leaf removal crew is ready to respond as fall approaches to clean debris from the streets and drain inlets. We're having a late leaf fall this year, so we're thinking it probably, unfortunately, is probably going to hit about the same time the rain does, which makes it a little complicated, but we are on it very well. It usually takes our crews a good month and a half to clean all the leaves that fall. It's quite extensive amount of leaves. Our city crews and our contracted landscape contractor is ready to respond to tree-related issues. One of the issues that we're really worried about is a wind event because of how dry some of the larger trees are. So we do have, our landscape contractor is on call at any time to come and help us remove trees because we, even last year, we had three crews and our contracted landscape contractor was out at the same time, cutting trees and getting them off sidewalks, getting them off public areas so they could still function during the storm. Our aerial trucks and our chippers are ready for tree removal cleanup. The city crews all have cell phones and are aware of standby duty requirements. We've looked at the rosters, we have everyone knowing, we've restricted a little bit of off due, off times, vacation hours during the holidays. We like, we, not that they can't take them, but we like a lot of people around in the area in case we need them. So we're pretty much at 85 to 90% all the time of our crews available. City has a stockpile of sand, thousands of sandbags in case of emergencies. The sandbag filling station is at F Street Yard, which is 1015 F Street. And it will be set up with signs, just like it was last year, where you go in one, at one end on F Street and you exit at the other street. And it is up to 10 sandbags each time you go in, so everyone has a chance to get them, you can come back. And we're ready to put those together. We have them all, some already set up for that event if it's needed. And city crews recently attended an all-day flood fighting methods course with hands-on training. This was hosted by the fire department in town. It was really a great lesson, the use of sandbags and other devices. It actually was hands-on. So they got good training on how to deal with some of the storm fighting issues that we'll be needing. The next couple of slides is mainly measures that the public can take. And I think a big one is maintain your gutter and your drainage ways. Not only your onsite, because every house, when it's bought and improved recent years, has an overland release point. And if you don't change your landscaping very much in the backyard, you still have an overland release point. So you should have overland release point clear of objects, so the water, if it does flood your backyard, will go to the front. But, and when we're talking about gutters, we're talking about your roof gutters, but also your gutter and your street. As the leaves fall, the first thing that we recommend is that you use your green can as much as possible. And obviously, that's not good enough for when you have very, very large trees. So, everyone gathers those and puts them in the street, which is fine for our street crews to clean up. We'd like you to keep the gutter clear though. Keep the first 18 inches away from the gutter, which is concrete, you'll see the difference. Keep that clear, because when that's not clear, you actually create flooding upstream of you in someone else's yard. And if you just keep it away from the gutter, you keep that flow going, because we can't get to every single pile the next day. So it's very important that we do that as citizens. It is recommended that you keep one car off the street and in the driveway, and at least a half a tank, and some places say a full tank of gas, just so you don't, in case we lose power at the gas stations. And also, so you can get in and out of the car in case your streets are a little flooded, so it's, you're not in a real mess. You have it in your driveways. Know the location to get sandbags, and as I said, that will be 1015 F Street, at the Public Works F Street Yard. Have tools available for minor issues. This is one that I wasn't going to put here, but everyone seems to tell me it's a good idea. Just know where your hammer and your nails are in case you have to repair a fence, or you have to, and your saw in case you have to trim a limb. There's things that you can do to help yourself in your own yard. Keep trees trimmed and in good shape, especially this year when they're very dry. So if the branch looks like it's going to fall, I would be proactive and remove it now. Tie down outdoor possessions and bring them inside. A lot of what they're predicting is some high rain, high wind events, which we have every year usually anyway, so that's just a safety issue. Now, what I got off the FEMA website was basically three things. And these things are more in terms of a general emergency, so they're not just flooding, but just generally an emergency. One is to create an emergency family plan list. And items on that list would be a floor plan with some escape routes in your house, just general items that you know how to get out of. Know and post emergency numbers and make sure your children know how to use those emergency numbers. Basic first aid and CPR, have that available, make sure everyone knows how to do that in your houses as much as you can. And itemize personal property. In case there is a problem when you do lose some personal property, you should itemize it. And that would be an emergency family plan list. The second thing that's listed on the FEMA site is to create an emergency action plan. It's similar, it's just saying that in course, if you do get a flood event, and it seems like if we do get a flood event in town, it's going to be back a sidewalk to back a sidewalk. The street's going to be flooded. We don't see the houses flooded, it's the street. And when you study and you design storm drains, it actually, that is a storm, that is part of your storm element. Your street is your storm element. And the worst storms are designed to go back a sidewalk to back a sidewalk. It's made to be a carrier of storm water. But it is suggested, you know, if the storm is moving in to move some items above the first floor level, if you're worried about it, assemble your valuables and keep your cars fueled up. The last thing the FEMA recommends is prepare a disaster supply kit list. This includes water, non-perishable packaged canned goods with a non-electric can opener, phone numbers, copies of your insurance, credit cards and extra cash, if anyone has extra cash. Infant items for your babies, you definitely need those. Personal products, you need to keep those personal products available. Flashlights, battery, extra batteries, matches, blankets, rain gear, just general items. And this is off a list, it's quite extensive. I just picked a few items, and I will give you the website, I think on the next slide. Yeah, here we go. Some websites that you can go to, the Merced County Office of Emergency Services is listed up there. You actually can just go and search out Merced County Office of Emergency Services, and you'll come up with this website. American Red Cross, which a lot of this information came from, has a nice website. FEMA is a wonderful website, and it lists, when you look at that, a lot of it is for extreme emergencies, so it's not flooding in the streets, but it's good to be aware of what they suggest. And California Storm Ready is another website. That's a very good one. This just shows you the FEMA website, it just says you have to click the link that's in black to get into FEMA. This is the Storms California website, and this is the cover sheet that you go to with the picture of our governor there in the middle. And the last one, well, that's a pretty nice slide. Be prepared. I did see it before. Be prepared. It's very important to be prepared. We're looking for the rain, we're not looking for a huge event at one time, but we're looking for the rain. And just be patient, it does take the streets a while to drain. We do get on them, we call Public Works. If your street hasn't drained in like half an hour to an hour after the rain stopped, call us, because that's a sign of a backup and your storm drains in front of your house. And we'll get on it as quickly as we can. That's all I have for you.
Mr. Carrigan?
One thing we do at the city is we plan for events. Police and fire do this all day long, Public Works does it all day long, whether it's a flood, or rain, or wind, or fire. And I want to give you one example, because Mark just laid out kind of what Public Works is doing, but this really happened, and it was last December. It was a Saturday night, it was about 9:00, and it was pouring rain like stink. And I remember this because my phone rang, my cellphone rang, and it was Cecilia's Restaurant over here on H and 5th. And they said, "The water has jumped the curb, the sidewalk, it's coming into the restaurant, and it's headed towards the kitchen. We need sandbags now." And I said, "Wait five minutes, run outside, a white truck's going to be coming down the street." And they said, "You want me to go outside in the rain?" I said, "Wait five minutes and go out in the street, and you're going to wave this white truck down." So I called the F Street Yard, and Michael O'Brien answered the phone, and I said, "What are you doing?" And he said, "We are loading sandbags into a truck, where do you need them?" And I said, "Cecilia's right now." And he yelled at him, "Go to Cecilia's." Within five minutes, six minutes, they pulled up, emptied the sandbags, restaurant doesn't flood. And I'll tell you what, the presentation might not be terribly exciting, but they're prepared, they're ready, and it's cool when the plan works, because the folks at Cecilia's couldn't have been happier. They called on the Monday, and they were just over the top happy, and it was like, well, you know, it's kind of what we do, and when we get it right, nobody really knows. But when something doesn't get done right, you're on 5 o'clock news, and you see all that flooding. So when you see that this winter, it won't be us, you know, it won't be us. So, that's kind of what we do here at the city, is we plan and prepare, and if we get it right, you won't even know it. So I wanted to point that one out, because we've all been to Cecilia's, and it was really neat to be able to help them out, help them out so quickly. And I've told this story about 100 times, because I'm really proud of our guys, and they just did a great job, so that's my real life example.
Thank you. Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Faison, for such a wonderful presentation. It's something that I think that our community needed to hear and be prepared for. We've also, I think most of our council members have received an email from Dave Jones, who is the Insurance Commissioner for the State of California. And because of the high likelihood of the El Nino coming, the State Department, the State Insurance Commissioner is recommending that homeowners, homeowners consider purchasing flood insurance for this period of time. Flood insurance also comes through the federal government, and you have to purchase it at least 30 days before the rains start. So, it's better to have it as an insurance just for this one year, because if we do have any flooding, or if you do have flooding in your home as a result of the El Nino, it could be quite costly to repair that and clean it up. So you can go to the state website at www-insurance.ca.gov, and there's information there, or there's a hotline at 800-927-4357. I purchased flood insurance just this one time this year, just to cover myself, because I certainly can't afford to go and rehab my house at thousands of dollars should a flood occur. And I have several friends and acquaintances who have done the same thing. So this is just a recommendation. It's come from our State Department of Insurance Commissioner, and so I want to pass that information on to our community out there in case you would want to look into it. And you can also just go to your own insurance broker, and they will be able to write the policy for you through the federal government. And that's all that I have. And again, thank you so much. I'm really happy to hear how proactive our community and our Public Works Department is in taking care of issues that happen in our community.
Thank you. Mark, please thank your team for us. Council members, any other comments? Okay. Let's go on to advisement of public notices, item nine, and there is no report. Let's go on to item 10, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one announcement, and it's with Thanksgiving around the corner, there will be a turkey, free turkey giveaway next Tuesday, November 24th at 1:00. It's limit one per household, and this is Rancho Ed, Greg Hostler's company, it's an annual event they have. They give away 500 turkeys and bags of almonds. It's one limit per household. Again, it's next Tuesday, the 24th, at 1:00 at the fairgrounds, the Obanyan Pavilion. A bunch of us have worked this event the last couple of years. It happens fast, get there early, we'll be, have handed out 500 turkeys in about 45 minutes. But it's a great event, and all you got to do is just stand in line, they're going to take care of you. So, next Tuesday, 1:00 at the fairgrounds, free turkeys and almonds.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. All right. Let's go on with city council member reports, item 11. Tonight, we'll start with Mrs. Lewis.
I have nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Fast. Okay, let's go on to Mr. Silveira, and he's fast too, because he's not here. Let's go on to Mrs. Stone Grove.
Thank you. The only reminder I have for tonight is the Breakfast with Santa event that will be held at the Community Center on Saturday, December 5th, and you can purchase the tickets at the Community Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Furia?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Dela Cruz, for bringing the kids out. It was nice to see them here. See, some of the students, I taught history class last summer, nice to see them. This is, this is where it all gets done. So whenever you look around and say, "Why is my city the way it is?", you can blame us.
Thank us.
So, thanks for coming up. December 4th, December 4th, this is the Santa Claus Parade, it gets bigger every year. As I said, it doesn't cost any, Chamber of Commerce puts it on, has been doing it. At the end, we like the Christmas tree, the city Christmas tree at the plaza. Junior High School, Los Banos High School Choir sing there at that. A lot of people come out. It's a lot of fun. Doesn't cost any to enter the parade, so if you've got some great idea to get into the Christmas parade with Sesame Street theme, it's a lot of fun. That's a very fun weekend, as Ms. Stone Grove said, we have this Breakfast with Santa Saturday morning, Saturday through the day, the Maker's Market at the Arts Center. Have you ever been to the Arts Center? It's in the corner of 15th and K Streets. It's the old Catholic church. Beautiful old building, they have a wonderful craft fair, sales there. I have a choir going to sing there too in the afternoon. And that should do it. Have a happy Thanksgiving, and hopefully see around here a lot more than just when you have to for class.
It was only 32 minutes so far, so make sure you get credit for at least a couple hours.
Well, Mayor's not done talking yet.
Anyway, the Vets Parade. If you attended that this year, it was even bigger and better than it was the year before. We're looking forward to having the parade grow and grow and grow. This is our second year as a Veterans Parade. Just salutes to all the veterans who participated and all the people that helped make it possible. And VFW, American Legion, thank you so much, all the members for contributing what you did. The breakfast and lunch was fantastic. Had a great time visiting with people, and again, please include that if you can next year. The Christmas Parade, again, December 4th, hopefully everyone can attend. It's, that has grown over, Bertha, how many years has it been? Where's Bertha?
I have, well, I can't remember 31, but I did, yeah.
Okay. 31 years?
31, but I've been here--
Okay. Okay. So, Mrs. Furia, the chamber director says 31 years. So please come out, and we hope to see you there. Again, I'd like to announce that the Los Banos City Council will be hosting the 19th Annual Holiday Open House at Los Banos City Hall before the next council meeting, December 2nd. It will be on December 2nd, 2015, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. Everyone's welcome, the public is welcome, so please, please come out and enjoy some good conversation and some good food. And City Hall just does a marvelous job with the, with the refreshments, and it just, come and see, so we don't have any food left over, okay? Just come. And with that, if there's nothing else, I would like to adjourn this meeting, Mr. Furia, he's only two minutes, at 7--
Trying to get my credit.
Okay. 7:34.